It's good evening, everybody. It's 7:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Well, this definitely feels like a midsummer room. Yep. We have Katina and Ilda with us online, and we are expecting Mark to join us also. But we certainly have more than a quorum, so we can get the meeting started. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And there is Mark. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you.
So we'll go with approval of the minutes. I entertain a motion to approve the July 9th meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Brendan, seconded by Paula. Is there any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Are there any? No, it's all unanimous. Okay. Public comment. Is there anybody in the room or online who would like to speak during public comment? No? Okay. So we'll keep moving along. Board chairs report. Well, we'll be talking about the budget, which is an ongoing issue for us later on in the agenda. I would like to add an item. Since this is not a special meeting, we can do so. Under discussion, I would like to add discussion of the upcoming board retreat with Dr. Gamaro on August Saturday, August 9th. So I would, when I stopped talking, I would entertain a motion to add discussion of the board retreat onto the agenda under item... Eight. Eight. So that's really it. I don't have anything else to report at this point in time.
I move that we add for discussion the retreat with Dr. Romero on August 8th.
No, 9th.
9th.
Okay. Do I get a second on Katina's motion?
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Any discussion?
I'll be on vacation, and I'm sorry I didn't get the email.
No, Ilda, can you? We're not talking about the retreat yet. We're just adding this item to the agenda. So all those in favor of adding this item to the agenda under discussion items, please indicate by raising your hand. Thank you. Now we're on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. If you can go to the next slide. And so an update on summer school. Summer learning is in full swing at Wyndham Public Schools. We are on week number three. We currently have three offerings. One is the pre-K through 12 extended school year for students who, as indicated in their IEPs, that they have an extended school experience. We also are offering the K through third grade experience that is focused on literacy. And we're having the summer high school credit recovery program, which is the first time they've been able to be back at the high school after the renovations. We have some pictures. If you can go to the next slides of some of our students engage in fun learning activities. You can go through the next one as well. We have one more week to go for our elementary friends, and the experience for the high school students is over this week. They have a three-week experience. I'll pause to see if there's any comments or questions about summer school programming.
I have a question. I know we had to scale back our summer offerings drastically because we were able to expand them under the money that we had from SR and other sources. Have there been any blowback from families and parents that we weren't able to offer as many slots as we have in the past?
It is my understanding that we haven't had any communication from parents regarding summer school.
Okay.
And that we have been able to offer summer school for every single student who needed it this year.
Okay. I just wondered, since we had like 400 students participate in like a year ago or whatever, whether there were people who couldn't take advantage of it who wanted to. But it sounds like we were able to offer for everybody. Thank you.
If you can go to the next slide, please. An update on facilities in IT. We have a few extra projects this summer that we have facilities in IT working on. We are on track with the fifth grade move. The classrooms at the middle school are ready for our students and our staff. We're also on track with the Wyndham Center closure. Any items that can be reused are being relocated to our other schools in the district. And we are disposing of any unusable items. So if you see any items in any of our dumpsters, it's because these are unusable. We're doing the same with technology. IT is making sure that they're salvaging any technology that is usable again and using it across the district. And we plan to be fully out of Wyndham Center by the end of the summer and turning the building over to the town. We want to make sure that we thank the facilities and the IT team for managing these extra projects in addition to all of the summer work that they need to do to get our schools open and ready for the beginning of the school year. And so it is truly appreciated that it's been a very smooth transition and process. Any questions or comments?
Lynn. Lynn.
Mark? Go ahead.
Just a quick question. I don't know if it's feasible, but have we reached out to area preschools or whatever to come and take a look at this? That's what we may deemed unusable, maybe they could use. Or is it not feasible to do that to have preschools or daycares come and take a look at the equipment before we discard it?
I can inquire and get back to the board.
Mary?
Yeah, I have two questions. The first, just regarding the Wyndham Center school closure. I am a little worried because, you know, that was somewhat based on building a new elementary school. But if that does not come to be, and it seems rather in the distant future, we are going to need swing space. We are going to have to renovate elementary schools soon if they are going to be in use for how many years. So I am a little concerned about turning that building over just because also the town has not shown any support or consistent support for the elementary school consolidation. And then the other question was about the middle school. Just will the fifth grade classes, you know, will the class sizes be comparable to what they were when they were, the fifth graders were located in the elementary schools? And is the fit going to be good? I'm just curious.
Again, it is my understanding that the class sizes will remain similar to what they were in the past. And also in regards to the building, we would need to wait for the referendum to, whether or not it passes, before we make decisions about fixing some of the buildings. And so I think we need, in order to make an informed decision, we would need that decision to be made first, whether or not the referendum for the new elementary school to pass or not.
Well, we know we have the referendum coming up on November 4th. So, you know, we can certainly spend time talking at a board meeting and a working session. We can spend time. We have an October retreat coming up if we want to talk about the sort of long-term prospects. But I, for one, am hesitant to plan for not having a consolidated elementary school, even though it looks like... We just don't know until we bring it to the voters. So I think that also, Mary, we had a lot of discussion about the long-term use of the buildings with the closure of Wyndham Center School. I don't know whether we even have the ability to say we still want to keep ownership of that building. That's something we'd need to, I mean, keep use of that building once we've vacated it. We need to explore that. So I'm noting your concerns and saying we should have more discussion about them when everybody can be prepared for that discussion. And the information that the board would like to know more about is shared with the administration, and they can come back with those responses. Does that make sense to folks? Yes, Mary?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean...
Go ahead, Mary, I'm sorry.
It makes sense, although I sort of think that the whole idea about vacating one of the schools maybe should have sparked more of a concrete discussion. What I'm saying is if we're handing it over, and I'm not sure what that means, I don't think we should hand it over until the referendum, at least. Also, it is still, the school district decides, you know, how long they need to have the school. So the town can't just come in and say they're taking it, as far as I can tell. And I just want to make sure that stu... I'm saying if this gets sent down, a consolidated school, instead of taking the four or five years, which I was surprised to hear that timeline. But if it's even longer, there are going to have to be some dire necessary renovations done in the current building. So I just don't want the situation when my son was in Natchog and they closed the school and two grades were in part of Kramer and three grades were shoehorned into the middle school, which did not really have the room. And, you know, it was a very terrible experience for me as a parent and for him as a student. So I don't want that to happen to other families.
Well, school planning and design will not stop doing its work. That committee, Brendan, you may want to talk about this, you know, because as long as we're inhabiting those buildings, we're not just stopping doing things.
Right. Yeah, no, we're definitely not. But we can definitely have a more in-depth discussion about this at the next school planning and design.
There has been an inquiry made about who owns the frog that is sitting in front of Wyndham Center School and where is it going? Does anybody know the answer to that on staff? It was brought up to me by a constituent who has designs on it. And I said it belongs to the board of ed, as far as I know, in the school system. And it should be our decision about where it goes. But I just want to put that out there for staff to consider. Thank you.
Lynn?
Yes?
Yeah. I agree with your decision or your discussion about we should review this in more detail. Because my recollection of the closing of Wyndham Center School was that had nothing to do with building a new school. That Wyndham Center was closed based on population and fitting into the other schools, and it was an independent decision. So my recollection seems to be different than Mary's. So I think you're right. I think we do need to dive back into our original paperwork as to why we did it. But I recall closing the school was not tied into building a new school, though I understand Mary's point about the possible need for turnaround space or extra space. But it certainly something we should look back at, why we made that decision.
Lynn, this is Katina. I agree with Mark. Of course, Mary has good points. But I recall that we made that decision independent from the building and old school. And back to the frog. When I was a staff member, I think I remember that was a gift to Wyndham Center School. And yes, it's ours as a board.
Thank you. We'll put this on the, on the, on the agenda, really, for Dr. Gamaro and me. We're going to be starting to talk about the agendas for the upcoming year and issues that we want to delve into more and maybe do workshops on and things like that to talk more about. And we'll figure out the timing and the sequencing of all of that. Thank you, everybody, for your thoughts on this. Anything else?
Yes, as we consider... Oh, sorry, Lynn.
Go ahead.
As we considered Mark's recommendation about, you know, if there, we have consulted with other preschools, et cetera, wondering about the playground equipment and if that could be also donated or moved to other schools. So if it's still in good condition and usable.
Brendan, it sounds like your committee has some things to be talking about.
Indeed, we do.
Thank you. Anything else on this before we move on? Okay. So we're on to the next item.
Next item is just an acknowledgement of a $1,000 donation to support student and teacher supplies that was made to Natchog School. The donor is the son of a former teacher who wishes to remain anonymous. And the gift was made in appreciation of the teaching profession. So we're really grateful for the generous donation and for this individual's support of our schools.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Now we're on to committee reports and policy. Katina?
Yes.
I'm handing it over to you.
Yes, thank you. The policy committee met on July 14th. We approved the minutes of the prior meeting. And at that, at this July 14th meeting, we discussed three very important revisions to policies due to legislative updates and also to the state of Connecticut general statutes that had to be updated in our policies. Those were the student discipline policy, the Connecticut school climate policy, and the restorative practice response policies, all of which you have in your packet. Of importance and disciplinary actions is reporting and recording to a school officials a way to warrant exceptions from disciplinary action in certain circumstances. One of which, for example, if a student who was in the proximity or maybe somewhat involved is reports that the major incident. And that can be discussed among the staff and the proper administrators and not receive the same disciplinary actions as other students. I'm sorry, I'm in a hotel and there is noise. Also, in cases, in situations of very serious disruption, this school administrator shall notify the parent and guardians immediately about what's happening to the, with the students within 24 hours. Also, have, if a teacher or a staff member wants to have a meeting, a crisis intervention, that parent needs to be notified. And in most of those crisis interventions, there would not be any school officer involved unless it is required or there is a situation that is criminal in nature or really egregious. School climate, which is a Connecticut climate policy, will be now part of our policy book. And as of this year, Dr. Gamaro and the staff will start implementing and following up with the school climate in all the schools and having a very well-planned, involving evaluation and action planning. And is contextual, right? Each school, depending on their age of the students, et cetera, will be a little different. But that will be part, intricate part of what's happening in the schools, very active. And last but not least, is restorative practices. And this is very important. As a social worker, is where the kids repair and try to, you know, solve and make up for the mistakes they have been doing. Except, of course, in situations where there is some criminal act or the bullying goes, for example, to an extreme that it completely goes against the student discipline policy. So those were very important. There are three of them go in sequence together. And we are happy to have that have been discussed in our meeting. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Katina? I know there was a lot for us to read. I think it was close to...
A hundred pages.
Or something like that for us to read on these policy changes. I also want to note that at the policy committee, there was quite an extensive discussion about the school climate policy requirements that the state is sending down to the districts, which fits in with a big concern that the board has and that, and that we all want to work on very seriously. And we did talk, if I'm not incorrect, about the requirement that we'll be having lots of training and coaching and support work that will need to be done, as well as a workshop or two for the board so that the board fully understands how this has to be implemented and the impact that will have. Is that, did I recall that correctly, Katina?
Correct. And of course, at the policy meeting, we cannot go into the details of administrative sequence and what that's going to look like. But I'm happy that now we are going to be implementing that policy. And I was wondering, Brendan, do you have anything else to add since you were there at the meeting, too?
I think between you and Lynn, you guys covered it pretty well.
Yeah, so I'm looking forward those type of workshops for the board. Well, thank you, everybody, for listening.
Mary has a question or a comment?
Yeah. Well, for some of those policies, it's like an update from 2023. So, I mean, we were supposed to implement some of this stuff. So I'm just curious, will we, I would like to, as a board, get maybe at some point after the school year starts, the list. I mean, the state says that the school climate coordinator is the superintendent for the whole district, according to the policy, or an administrator appointed by the superintendent. So I would just like to have that. And then the school climate specialist is the principal in each school or somebody who has the certifications according to Connecticut statute 10145, et cetera. So I would like that because some of this was supposed to be going on already, but it would be nice to keep up with this.
Actually, our understanding is that although that was in 2023, as you well said, it is now that the Department of Education is focusing on those and starting to move them to fruition in the school system. So we're not as behind as other... I mean, it's similar for many districts. But you're right. At some point, the administration, Dr. Gamaro and others will tell us who, you know, what's happening in detail for the implementation of the climate policy. Thank you.
Dr. Gamaro?
Yes, as a cabinet, we're going to be unpacking the policy. We're going to be identifying who are the individuals who are going to be responsible for the different areas that are indicated in the policy. We're also unpacking the policy with our leaders at the fall retreat. And we already have some of these practices that are taking place, to your point, in the buildings. And so we are not anticipating that we need to, like, do like a complete overhaul. We just need to make sure that whatever's missing, that we implement those practices. We are anticipating that we will need some professional learning, of course, about some of the practices. And then there's steps that we currently don't have in place. So for instance, if there's a concern from a teacher, being able to request a meeting with a parent right away if there's an incident that's of concern or ensuring that we're doing these practices with fidelity across the district. Those are things that we definitely need to make sure that they're happening. But we wouldn't be starting from scratch. So it's first identifying where is it that we are as a district, unpacking the policy, understanding the policy, and then implementing whatever it is that, you know, we need to ensure that is taking place. But we do need to identify some resources to engage in professional learning.
So that's it for policy committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mary, I've made a note of your specific request, too. Thank you. Any other comments on that? Okay, we're on to school planning and design.
Thank you. We met on July 14th, or at least a couple of us did. Wasn't quite enough for a quorum, so we didn't approve the last few minutes. We received some updates from facilities. We talked about the moves from Wyndham Center and the fifth grade moves that we've already talked about earlier in the meeting. Other than that, facilities is working on a couple of projects to close out from the 2425 CIP, such as the walkway at Barrows and the, some abatement at Sweeney and the gym floor at the middle school. We also discussed the North Wyndham Septic well pit that is in progress and is expected to be done by mid-August. So SLI is going to keep us informed on that. When we met last week, they were waiting on parts, but we're expecting to have them in within a week or two and get to that project relatively quickly. After that, we did review the capital improvement budgets, leftovers from past years. There's four past years that have some money left in them. There's money for the North Wyndham Roof Project, which is on hold until we determine what's going on with the elementary school consolidation project. That's from 2020. From 2023, there's money to complete the Sweeney Heating Upgrade Project, which again is on hold until after the consolidation. There's money left in 2024 for the middle school track and tennis courts, which SLI is still planning. So that is there for use, but, you know, hasn't been used yet. And then in 2025, there's some money left over for some possible diversity locker room and facility shed at the high school that SLI is holding off on for now as we determine exactly what the needs are. Other than that, there are other very small balances around like 26 cents in one account, $380 in another. Nothing that a capital project can be done with. SLI is going to work on whittling those down, but just because of the hoops between moving between years or moving between buildings, some of that may just lay out there for a little while. And that was our meeting.
Thank you, Brendan. Are there questions or comments from anybody? No? Okay. Well, thank you. And then we're on to finance and audit. And Mark, I'm going to hand it over to you.
Thank you. Actually, I guess I should tack a question on, but I will as I get into my report. We met last week, and a number of items that we talked about I think will be clarified during the budget update. Will come in later up on the agenda. We discussed the transfers, which, as you can see by the list that was sent to us, has grown now that we've actually finalized the transfer list. So we'll have that discussion again more under the updates. We were expecting to finish the year with a 1.8 carryover, the 925, which I believe we have. Neil pointed out that last year we had a grant carryover of 1.19... Neil pointed out that last year, we had a grant carryover of 1.19 million, but because of the volatility of the federal grants and the loss of the ESF funds, this year, our carryover is just 37, 37,000. So that's a significant, you can see how the grants are working, a significant drop. There was a question about, and I think that's my question, I guess, for Brendan, there was a question about the confirmation that the monies were available to start those projects like the North Wyndham Septic. And am I to assume, Brendan, from what you're saying, that we got the approval from the town that those monies were available?
So the North Wyndham Septic did not require approval from the town because it's for the same building. The one for Barrows that we approved at the last meeting still has to go to the town. I don't know if SLI has done that yet, but he's not expending money against that yet either.
Okay. So so the we didn't need it for that, okay. All right. And the other note we had is again, Neil reported that even if we get a 0%, well, not even if, if we get a 0% budget increase this year, there will actually be a reduction in the overall spending, again, because of the reduction to state and federal grants. So that 0% budget for us actually is is becomes a less or a negative for us. So we have to make sure the Board of Finance fully understands what that that indicates to us and why it's important, as the superintendent pointed out, to get that 161,000 difference that we're looking for. And that was essentially the the minutes, as I say, certainly the items will be updated under discussion.
Thank you, Mark. Do you want to share the budget transfer amount that will be?
Well, the budget transfer amount that I have, and again, we can confirm
That we'll be acting on? Yeah, go ahead.
That we'll be acting on tonight would be, if I'm reading this correctly, $4,060,911. And most of that is the chewing up of the items due to the budget freeze and getting, you know, getting the money together for the for our carryover. So we'll be asking for the board approval of transfers of $4,060,911.
Thank you. And I see Chin Young nodding that that's correct. And that is just wrap, because I'm sorry, I had to miss last week's meeting. That's, do we feel that's the final transfer to wrap up this past fiscal year?
Yes. I haven't said it yet.
Yep.
Let's check with
She said yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Any questions from our comments? Mary?
Yeah, I was just slightly confused because on page 21 of the transfers, there was a total as of 7/16/25 of 85,000. Was that added to come up with the 4 million and change? Okay. I wasn't sure if they were two different things.
Yeah.
Have we voted on that?
She should come up to the mic because
I'm sorry, you need to come up to the mic because people who are listening to this online can't hear what you're saying.
Yeah. The 85,880 was what we had as of our meeting, but we're still waiting for the final numbers.
The 85,880 is different transfers to wrap up, also to wrap up the year, but they actually was moving money to pay the bills. So the bigger, the $4 million ones was actually chewing up all the accounts to come to that $925,000 carryover. And this, that's a 480, 485 line transfer. So we have to grab every dollar from every line to get to that 925,000.
So do we have to vote on both of those or that's the thing?
The $85,000, we already vote voted on the finance and audit committee meeting, and we are bringing it to this meeting as well.
So there are two separate ones, is Mary's asking, is that's, it's it's the 4,60,911 and and also 85?
1,880.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you for clarifying that, everybody. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments about finance and audit? I just want to acknowledge all the hard work that had to go into being able to quantify all these transfers, go to all those different lines, pull that money wherever we needed to and make all this work. Thank you very much. I really appreciate it, and I know the rest of the board does also, Chin Young, and whoever helped you with it. Okay, now we're on to discussion items. And we have two items, but the first is the budget update. And I think I'll hand it over to you, Dr. Gomero.
So we do not have many changes since last time we met. However, I wanted to give you an update of what has transpired since then. So I'm going to be reviewing a fact sheet that I shared with the Board of Finance before their meeting that took place on July 15th. I also have shared it with the board, if we can go to the next slide. And we also went in front of the board on July 15th and shared this information in person as well. So as we know, the shortfall between the board approved budget and the town approved budget, which is a 0% increase, is over $3 million. You can go on to the next slide. And I shared at the Board of Finance meeting that we took some aggressive measures to reduce our expenditures. This included freezing the budget in late April, reducing the permanent school budgets by $60,000, reducing 15 positions, which added $508,000, reducing our projected expenditures for tuition, adding $150,000, increasing the assumption for attrition by $243,000. We also received some funding late in the year, the special ed and expansion grant, which was in the amount of $423,000. We also received a legislative grant for $250,000 towards the end of the year, and we received more of the Medicaid carryover than we anticipated, which was in the amount of $304,000. And due to all of these cuts in the budget freeze, we were able to get to a 1.8 set aside of $925,000, which still leaves us with a shortfall of $161,000 to get to the 0% budget increase. If you can go to the next slide. In addition, as I have shared previously, and I shared with the Board of Finance, we are monitoring the disbursement of some federal grants. The first one is on hold for $226,000, and we are unsure as to what's going to happen to the rest of the federal funds. They have not been awarded yet, which means that this could widen our gap by close to $1 million in addition to the 161. So I shared with the Board of Finance what was at stake, if we can go to the next slide. We are facing the potential of having to reduce additional positions. We're looking at seven non-affiliated positions. We're also still considering, unfortunately, having to cut some of middle grade sports, high school clubs, and field trips. So these are definitely cuts that we do not want to make. We shared that with the Board of Finance that this would be really critical for our students to be able to be successful. And some of these activities and and opportunities are really critical for them to be successful in school. So and we don't want to cut any additional positions. And so we really were expecting, unfortunately, for us to be able to get the $161,000, but we were not able to. The outcome was, if you can go into the next slide, the outcome of this discussion was that the Board of Finance voted for 0% increase to the Board of Ed budget. So we will continue to go back to plead our case for additional funding needed. And I encourage the board and the community to really come out and express your thoughts on the next events that are happening, both the Board of Finance meeting on September 17th, and there will be another referendum on September 30th. And this would be, you know, I would think that one of our last chances to be able to get the shortfall amount.
A friendly amendment to these important upcoming dates. There will be a Board of Finance meeting in August, on the third Wednesday of August. So people should keep that in mind because that will be the Board of Finance's chance to make any changes before going to referendum. And there will also, as is required by our charter, there will have to be a public hearing several weeks before the referendum date yet to be determined. And anybody can come speak at that public hearing, and we'll let folks know when that date is. And I also got confirmation late this afternoon that the referendum date is not definitely set for September 30th. They wanted to set it for September 23rd, but that ended up being an important holiday in the Jewish faith. And so they have decided that they want to try to have it that following week, but they, according to the Chair of the Board of Finance, have not officially set the date yet. So I'm sorry to add more dates here, but that's where we are right now.
We reached out to this afternoon, actually, and they were the ones who gave us these dates. So we'll definitely make some changes and adjust based on the latest information.
Yeah, thanks. Also, I just want to, somebody asked me the question back, if we could go back a couple No, this one right here. Somebody asked me, no, 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 the one that we just had, you just had before, this one, about what's at stake. Somebody asked me if we're saying our shortfall is 161,000, and these are things that are being considered, but they add up to a lot more than 161,000. You might want to address that publicly for folks?
Well, if we go to the previous slide, we still have some federal grants that we have not received. So these are funds that are currently held, and we would have to find a way to to impact, this is going to have a huge impact if we don't get this funding. And so there's the funds that are being held right now, in addition to funds that we're not sure what's going to happen. So we are anticipating needing to make additional cuts. So if you go to the next slide, these are the items that we may need to consider cutting from if we have both the 161,000 shortfall and the federal funding is not released.
Thank you. I just wanted that to be publicly stated because that was a question that was asked by somebody earlier this week. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Mary?
Yeah, I mean, first, I'm, I just want to say we did not get the vote, the budget that was voted on in 2025. So it's, so
Mary, we've reached out to the attorney and have asked for guidance on that. So I will let you know.
Okay. And, but, yeah, I mean, I just think we need to also just be clear and say that there's like a pending sum of money that is still at issue for that budget. Also, I mean, we could just say that the Board of Finance cut our budget. I mean, so I think also that action that they took is what happened. So, you know, it's votes for a zero increase, you know, they cut it, they cut what we deemed necessary to deliver the educational mission of the Wyndham School District. And this, because of the charter, this referendum is not even necessary. So I have no idea, you know, about the dysfunction really that this represents. And as several people pointed out at the hearing that, you know, the first one before the first referendum, it is degrading to stand in front of them and, you know, beg for what is supposed to be necessary for our students and our town. And I don't really feel like doing it anymore. I have done it for years. So, you know, and they just, some of them seem to just enjoy it. So, but it's not necessary, it never changes their view.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else have anything they want to say or ask? Ask about? Okay, thank you. So more to come as this unfolds. It's been made pretty clear that this is a constantly evolving situation, and I want to acknowledge the stress that it has caused the board, the pain and heartache as that has caused the board, but also, more importantly, the staff and the and the administration as they've had to deal with this. This just never seems to go away. It's been hanging over everybody's head for heads for months now, and will continue for a few more months. Sorry about that.
It definitely, it definitely has an impact in our ability to retain top talent. You can imagine the impact that it has on individuals who are constantly worried about whether or not they're going to have their position for the following school year, which may prompt them to start looking at other districts. It impacts individuals' ability when they look at these numbers and thinking of what could be cut. It just, it's in all, as well as the cabinet and anyone involved in looking at the numbers and working, crunching the numbers to get to a 0% budget increase, because then it takes us away from planning for the instruction and what's important for our students that we should be utilizing this time for. So it is definitely unfortunate, but it impacts not only the board, our administrative team, our cabinet, but every single person and every single individual and community member in Wyndham Public Schools.
And and I'll add, Lynn, that it also impacts the the parents and the kids, especially the students, as sports, clubs, and activities are one of motivators that kids have to come to school, to do well, to stay up to date on their homeworks, et cetera. Not having our children be a priority is despicable.
Anything else? Okay.
Last comment, I just wanted to express that I am committed to continuing to share this message, whether it is being heard or not heard in multiple areas and in multiple places. And I will continue to advocate for our students and our community because this is the bare minimum of what we deserve. So I will continue to advocate for our schools.
And as we talked about at our last meeting, we'll have to have some budget forums and some activities before the referendum. So stay tuned, everybody. Next item on our agenda is some discussion of the board retreat. And
I'm passing around some drafts of the agenda.
For members of the public and people who are not on the board, one of the things that we agreed upon with Dr. Gomero when she came on board is that we wouldn't wait until October to have a retreat, that we'd have our October retreat, but we would also have a day-long retreat in the summer with Dr. Gomero. So we're going to talk a little bit about the agenda tonight, and I want to remind folks that I canvassed all of you about your availability on about your availability on dates in August, and this was the one date that everybody on the board said they were available. So it will be Saturday, August 9th, at Central Office Conference Room. And I'm going to hand it over to you now, Dr. Gamaro.
So you have in front of you the expanded version of the agenda. I just wanted to point out as as I mentioned, that is on August 9th, from 8:30 a.m. to about 3:00 p.m. And the theme for our time together is Strong Foundations, Bold Futures. And this is a conversation that we've been having at the cabinet level in terms of making sure that this year is a year when we are ensuring that we have strong foundations in all areas, whether it's curriculum and instruction, culture and climate, expectations for our students, and it's critical for me to have a strong foundation in relationship with the board. So we will be engaging in some of that work on the 9th. It will also give us an opportunity for us to reflect on our shared values, the purpose of why it is that you're part of the board, and why I'm here at Wyndham Public Schools, and what are our aspirations and our commitment to the Wyndham School, School Community. We should be dreaming bold. We want to make sure that we're aligning our vision and strategic priorities to student success for the 25, 26 school year and beyond. And we'll also have an opportunity for the board to identify or for us to co-create what the evaluation criteria will look like for me as a superintendent, knowing my role. Any, I'll give you an opportunity to just take a look at the extended version of the agenda, and I'll open it up for any questions or comments.
Mary?
You know, I was not looking forward to losing a Saturday just before I go back to work, but I have to say this is a very exciting agenda, and it is, I'm happy to say, very student-focused. I mean, sometimes we just hear about numbers and data, and it's quite depressing not to have the students as our focus. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I mean, the idea, I think, was for us to get some level-setting with each other, right? The board and Dr. Gamaro are new with each other, and even though we have elections coming up in November, and there may be some changes in the board, it's really important for the superintendent to know that we're all on the same page about what our values, what our vision is, what our priorities are. And you'll notice that we also did schedule some time for talking about the superintendent's evaluation criteria, rather than waiting until October, when she's a couple of months into the new academic year. It seems to make sense to talk about that so that we're all, like, moving forward with the same understanding. Does anybody have any concerns? Thoughts on the agenda? And Mark, we tried not to have icebreakers for you.
I was hoping.
I appreciate that. That's very nice.
This is a draft form, so if you have any suggestions, if there's anything that you would like me to consider, please let me know.
Okay. Actually, if you have thoughts, it's probably most helpful if you get them to Dr. Gamaro and me before the beginning of August, so that if there are any, you know, maybe by, by what date would you like to have feedback? Would you say week, or?
I don't have my calendar in front of me, but a week, I would say by August 1st.
Okay. That way, then we can make any adjustments into the, in the agenda. And don't forget, we can have a parking lot at this retreat for things that we want to discuss in October. In fact, this may help us jump off to figure out what we want to focus on at our October retreat. And I hope, I don't have the date in front of me, but I hope you all have that in your calendars also. We, 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 yeah, we chose the date when we set the calendar for 2025, last fall.
Yes, we did.
Yeah. Okay. Any comments, questions? Okay, looking forward to spending a Saturday with you all, and Lauren and I will work on good food. So if you, you have any requests for food, make sure you let me know. Okay, so now we're on to action items, and so.
May I move that we take?
Go ahead.
Yes, I would like to move that we take action on item A, B, and C together as a board.
Do I get a second on that?
Second.
I think, I'll give it to Mark. There's a little delay when you're not in the room. Okay, second to Mark. Any further discussion on these policies? That we're adopting? Okay, if there are none, all those in favor of approval of these policies A, B, and C under item nine on the agenda, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. A lot of work ahead of us. Yes? Yes, right, that's right. Okay, thank you for reminding me. I got tunnel vision. So we've, we've made a motion to combine them.
Yes.
Now, I would entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan. I would like a second.
Second.
Second by, was that Ilda?
Katina.
Well, Ilda, your, your, your mic is off, so I couldn't hear you. So Katina. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. So we've taken care of items A, B, and C. Now we need to have approval of the authorized signatures change form from the Connecticut State Department of Education regarding the ED-099 Agreement for Child Nutrition Programs. And as it said in your packets, this is required when we have a change in who is eligible to be an authorized signer, and since we have a new superintendent, we need to change the signatures on the form. I would entertain a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Motion made by Mark. Seconded by Alicia. I see her trying to get the mic on. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Thank you. And now I would entertain a motion for, can we do the two budget transfers together, or do we need to do it separately? Okay, I would entertain a motion for a budget transfer of 4,691,111.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Mark. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Now I will entertain a motion for transfers of 85,880.
So moved.
Motion made by Brendan.
Second.
Seconded by Alicia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Mark, did you raise your hand?
Yes, I did.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Now we're on to public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:00 p.m.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned.
Have a good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night, all. Good night, Mark.
Good night, good night.